All right, welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting in Lakeville. Sorry, I had something jump up on the screen. It is Monday, August 30th, 2021, Board of Selectmen in Lakeville. So, let's start things off with item number one, in accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the August 30th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash lake cam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. The meeting will also be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. All right, we can go right to number two, Board of Selectmen announcements. I don't really have any announcements. Does any other selectmen have any announcements? All right.
No, just the only thing that I was glad that they put up the, you know, the sign for Corporal Phillips. And it seemed like we had a really good welcoming and then putting all the flags out. I thought that was just perfect.
Yeah, that was nice. Yep, that was nice. Welcome home. Um, all right, Rich, anything? No?
Well said, thanks.
All right, so I think we'll go right to number three, Town Administrator announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair, on a couple of things. Hopefully, we're getting past the worst of the heat. But just so the public knows and is aware, the senior center is available still as a cooling center. Looks like we have a day or two left of some hot weather and just in case, we're keeping it available for people in case they need it. Um, the, we had a nice time, the board and myself, along with a number of department heads and staff at the fire departments recognition night last week. That was a really good event. It was good to see the brave firefighters recognized. Particularly meaningful to me anyway was the, some of the notable responses they've had over the past year in the description of those. That was really interesting. Um, we are moving forward on our recruitments. I'll talk to you a little bit about new business about my thoughts on the HR Director. We're considering our strategies to the planner after our candidate, our chosen candidate declined. I am pleased to announce that we received a number of, two very large checks from Plymouth County for care reimbursement today. Towing about $469,000. Those are submitted on behalf of the school district, but still nice to receive them and good that we can pass that through. And finally, of course, I just once again encourage everybody to get your vaccinations. Sooner we get vaccinated, the sooner we get past this pandemic and the limitations that we have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, so can I, can, do you mind if we skip to number seven with the police chief, just so we can get you guys moving along, so we don't have to have you sit with us all night? So, number seven. Chief, if you want to take it away for us?
Sure. As you know, we have two open positions at the Lakeville Police Department. One of the positions, we have the candidate in front of you, Jared Tej. He worked with us before. He was appointed back in October. He's a graduate of the third ROC out of the Fitchburg State Recruit Officers class, and he graduated. He's got his bachelor's degree and he graduated with a, you know, a certified police officer. We hired him back then. He did make the decision to go to Taunton PD. He left us in June. And he is requesting to come back, which I think is, is pretty good. And I'd just like to highlight some of the things that he put in his resignation letter when he left back in June for Taunton. You know, it wasn't an easy decision for him to make. He thanked us, thanked the town for appointing him, for starting his career. And some of the highlights that he enjoyed when he worked with Lakeville was going to some of the local parks and watching flag football and baseball. He enjoyed getting out and interacting with the community. And, and he said it brought him so much joy seeing a community that has rallied around each other and helped each other through these treacherous times. And I think that he sees that and he sees that sense of community and he wants to come back to Lakeville and serve out the remainder of his career here in Lakeville. And I just think Jared's such a great guy and I think he's got a great, successful career in law enforcement and he is an asset to the town of Lakeville and I request his appointment as a police officer tonight.
All right, um, sounds like you missed us, you missed us, huh?
I did, a lot.
A lot. That's okay. You're young. You got to test the waters in other places. But when I saw your name on, when I saw the chief's request to have you reappointed, I was really very excited because I knew how excited, you know, the chief was back in the fall. So it's nice to, nice to have you back. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Jared Tej as a police officer constable effective August 30, 2021, for a probationary term to expire August 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Welcome back, Jared.
All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera.
Fabian, I. Yeah, welcome back. It's nice to have you back. I know the chief and some of the other higher ranking officers feel, you know, pretty happy that you're back too. So, welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we have Katie Goodfellow with us, correct?
I am, I'm here.
Okay, so we are going to discuss scheduling a Fall Town Meeting. So I do, I think in everyone's packet, we have the tentative schedule. So we're looking for November 8th to be the special Fall Town Meeting, which means we would have to open the warrant tonight. It looks like we are scheduled to close the warrant on or around September 7th. Vote on the article September 20th. We, of course, need to have Town Council review articles. And then all the legality, legal add in the paper, warrant posting, warrant review. Katie, any thoughts from you on this?
Now that that date works for me just fine and I'll work with Jose to get things set up. If there, if, I would appreciate it if there's any additional information for safety protocols, if anything has changed. If that information could be forwarded on to me. I know it's a moving target. So just keep me up to date. I also will have my eye on that, but sometimes you get information before I do.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Is this going to be in the auditorium?
I believe that it will be. Unless I hear a reason why we should not. Ideally, you know, ideally we'll, you know, have it there.
Yeah, the only reason it wouldn't be, sort of, with cameras, is if the school department doesn't want us to have it there.
Right. And I know that they were doing renovations before, when we wanted to have it in there and we could not because there was no air conditioning and there was renovation work. So unless that is still ongoing, I would hope that we could still use it.
So can I ask at this point if council and the school are available on the 8th? Yes?
Tracy, do you want to weigh in on that? I think we spoke with our Town Council.
Town Council is available. I didn't want to reach out to the school till after you had set the date tonight and I'll do that tomorrow. Okay.
So, what happens if they, they're not available and we vote yet to have a special town meeting?
Well, it would be a matter of shifting a date by a day or two. I mean, we, the, this timeline still holds. This allows us to have a town meeting anytime after basically late October. So.
But we're calling a special town meeting this evening for November 8th.
We're opening the warrants, yeah.
For November 8th.
Yeah, for November 8th one. So we have to stick to that date. If we can't, you know, if we can't have it in the auditorium, we can move it back to the gym. We've been doing it that way. The last one worked. And the acoustic issue was addressed and I think it worked rather well. Or we might consider moving it to the middle school. That's always another option. So do we want to keep it open instead of saying at, you know, specifically in the auditorium? Why don't we just say at upon acquit? And that way we don't box ourselves into a particular location in upon acquit.
And I think that would cover, that should cover it.
Is that okay, Tracy?
By me, I mean, I, I didn't, you know, school hasn't even opened yet, so I kind of figured it would be a blank slate.
Okay. Well, if, if you, when you ask about the auditorium, but you also ask for alternative spaces so that we don't have to keep going back and forth.
Sure, I will do. I'm going to do it tomorrow. I'll send it in.
You'll reach out tomorrow.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
All right, so I know attached to this, we do have a preliminary list of what is, what is going to be on the warrant, but.
It's, yeah, it is subject to change. I would know.
Yeah, it is subject to change.
And there are at least two others on there that aren't, that are enlisted, but which are, this is the bottom, is potential warrants, which are waiting to get some feedback from Town Council on. So, yeah, so this, this could still be revised some. I believe most of these are going to be fairly solid, but I, there's still some possibility of change.
Okay, I mean, I know, like we spoke with the Community Preservation Act folks at the last meeting and they're, you know, they're, they'll be, they wanted us to put that on there, so I see that in there, but so we can officially, do we have to do this in two votes, Tracy? Vote to have a meeting and then vote to open the warrant?
Yeah, you'd be better off doing two separate motions.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to schedule, to hold a special town meeting on November 8th. On or about, I think we have to say November 8th, right?
Do. I was just, I was saying, if we had to change it later, we could, that's awesome.
And I'll, 2021, I'll move, so moved.
Okay, do we want to put the time in there? Isn't it usually seven o'clock?
You'd want to put the time in there.
So seven o'clock. All right. Do we have a second, Rich?
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on just the scheduling of the meeting? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, I.
Fabian, I. Now I will entertain a motion to open the warrant for the November 8th Special Town Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Chair?
Yep.
You need to put an end date for the opening of the warrant.
Okay, so, let's to open the warrant tonight and to close the warrant on September 7th.
At what time, please?
We, so that's a week. Do we have to have it? Can it close on the 20th?
You can have it open or close as early or late as you want. The motion just needs to have a date and time in it.
Yeah, I, I think the 7th is too early. Okay. Does someone want to make a motion then?
Didn't you say, Ari, that there might be some additional things that might come on?
Um, there, well, there are two that I list on the list of items, which, which we talked about on the 20th, but they're not, they're not outside petitions to be our own. I don't really, I don't know of anything coming from the outside.
Okay, but that would, but if they're, even if they were our own, we'd have to have the warrant review.
Right.
Okay. I just want, I don't want to cut it off too soon, that's all.
Yeah, are you okay with the following week? So the 14th will still be a weekday, so we can say by five o'clock?
Yeah, that, that's fine with me, the 14th.
All right, so let me just write it down and then I'll, I'll say it. All right. I will entertain a motion to open the warrant tonight and keep it open until September 14th at 5:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Before you take the vote, I, I don't have my agenda with me. I'm just looking at my timeline just to make sure that that doesn't, doesn't change any of the timeline.
It doesn't, it doesn't, because to vote on, yeah, to vote on the articles, we have it September 20th.
Okay, perfect.
So there's a week between that.
That only gives a little tight time as far as if we get something that comes in and it has to go to Town Council. That's, that's a quick turnaround for Town Council.
Yeah, it's okay. They should do it because it's not the spring, it's the fall. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, I.
Fabian, I. All right, so Warren is open for anyone out there? Warren?
Was there a time included in the motion?
Yep, 5:00.
5:00 PM.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep.
All right, anything else from anyone on this? Okay, Katie, you all set?
I am, I am indeed. Thank you so much.
Okay, and we will definitely communicate with you.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, next on our agenda, we have the Do Believe the Fire Chief is With Us, correct?
I'm here.
There he is, okay. So we have discussion and approval of the draft memorandum of agreement between the town and the IAFF Local 3188. So I know we've discussed this before, but Ari, do you want to?
Yeah. So, yeah, this was a matter which was brought to you in executive session and is being brought for, for, for the board's direction. The, there's an agreement negotiated between the, signed agreement between the town and the firefighters' union regarding EMTs for recertification. The, there was language, there was a clarification required in language in the, in Article 22 of the contract regarding stipends versus compensation for specialization pay, and this clears that up. And then we also have an agreement, just for your, for your review and approval for regarding training reimbursements that would commit the recipient of the training, of the funding for the stipend to stay with the, with the, with the town for at least four years in their position as a firefighter, in order for us to get a good return on investment for the, for the amount of time and energy put into, to train that firefighter.
All right, thank you. So we need to vote these all as one? Can we do it all as one or do we have to do it separately?
I think you can, yeah.
I personally, I'd like to do it separately, just so that we'd have two separate votes.
Okay, all right. Do you want to go ahead and make those motions, Lorraine? Or no?
I just don't, um.
Want to kind of suggest?
Yeah, go ahead, Ari, because I just want to make sure that the motion is reflected clearly.
I think the first motion would be to approve the, to, to, to approve the amendments to the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the IAFF Local 318, which amends Article 22, Section 1, as noted on the attachment.
Okay, so moved. Okay.
Well, it could help.
Did you get that, Tracy? That's all right.
Somewhat, I'll fix it later.
Okay.
It's fine.
Yeah. Rich, do you want a second or?
Did second it.
Oh, okay. Any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, I.
And I. And then we want to do the other one, which has to do with the
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement agreement.
So this would be an amendment to the, to the collective bargaining group between the town and local 3188 to amend, to add section, a new section three to Article 23, training regarding reimbursement agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Just, I want, and it's only cosmetic inconsistency. Ari, can you just make sure that the, the, the titles are the same? They reflect the same on both?
Yes.
Just for consistency purposes.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Because I see that, you know, association wasn't in the second one.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
That's it.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera.
Fabian, I. All right, you didn't even really need to talk to the chief.
It's, it's better that way.
How are you? Are you good?
Yeah, it's been a busy day. Thanks for your time that you guys spent on this and, and thanks, Ari, for speaking to me. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving along. We have number six right now, discuss and possible vote to appoint Erica Correa as treasurer-collector. I know, Ari, you gave us a a cover, or memo here, if you want to. Don't have to read the whole memo, but.
That's fine. So the, the town has, as you know, converted to an appointed treasurer-collector from the previous configuration, which was elected treasurer-collector. That was done through a, the special, the special act of the legislature approved, which also included language regarding a potential employment agreement as well. Um, the, we, we widely advertise the job on a number of sites, including MMA and the treasure collector association and town side, of course. We received five applications, one of whom subsequently withdrew, but fortunately, we had some very strong ones. We had a, we had interviews a week of August 2nd, had an interview panel that consisted of the town clerk, myself, the town accountant, interim treasurer-collector and the HR Director. And we, the panel unanimously recommended Erica Correa for the position. Erica is currently the treasurer-collector for the town of Dennis. She previously served as assistant collector in Dartmouth. Um, and as well as served in the Dartmouth Town Clerk's office in the town of Fairhaven, Christopher Carrier. We were very impressed with her, her background, her references and her general demeanor was very positive as well. And she's completed all the pre-employment checks, been cleared for bonding and so on. Um, I would request that acknowledgement of her experience in the current, you know, based on her current compensation. And we offer the budgeted salary, which was $85,000 that is in the budget. She also currently earns three weeks, you know, vacation in her current position. Um, and has indicated that is a firm desire for her. So I'd also request that she provided the same in Lakeville to maintain her current rate of accrual. Um, as I mentioned, the special act allows the board to establish an employment contract. So the reason why Erica's not here tonight is because I thought you all might want to have a discussion regarding whether to do an employment contract and that didn't seem appropriate with the candidate on screen. Um, so if you're amenable, I'd be happy to, to, to work that through with her along with Town Council and come back to you for the, for approval of the contract. Um, the, would be, I think, probably a one or maybe one and a half year agreement, so going through the fiscal year, something like that. Um, that would be, match the employee handbook and, and the terms stated previously through execution. So I'll be happy to take any questions or any, or any, and any comments.
So you need a decision from us tonight on whether we want to do a contract or not?
Right.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with the contract. I know that this is the first time that we'll be filling the position on a permanent basis since we've made the, the decision to have this appointed position. So I'm okay having a contract. This is a very high level position, one that I would want to make sure that we had, you know, a candidate in there that we knew knew that we appreciated them and wanted them to, to commit, as well as they would like to commit with, to us. So, I'm okay with it.
Rich, any thoughts?
I'm fine with it.
You want to do the contract?
Sure.
All right, well, let's make it official then. I will entertain a motion to instruct the Town Administrator to work on a contract with the treasurer-collector potential appointment of Erica Correa.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
The only thing that I want to say, you know how I feel about, you know, the, the vacation time? I think, you know, for this case with the, with the contract in this level of position, I, I support the three weeks. But I'm hoping that we can work on our language in our handbook, so that it seems that we're being, when we recruit other people from other communities that have longstanding municipal experience, I want to make sure that we build that into our, our handbook going forward.
I think that's a very good point.
Yeah, I agree with you too, Lorraine.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
All right, what is, what is her start date?
So I was going to get to that. Thank you for asking, Rich. Yeah, it's all right. So that's one question I was going to ask you all. So she has to give 30 days notice. So if she felt comfortable giving notice tomorrow, which I don't know if she will or not, given that we haven't formally offered the job, um, then her earliest start date would be after her Columbus Day. I have spoken with Angela Chandler and she is willing to continue to her current level service through the, through the end of October. Um, honestly, in an ideal world, and I don't want to put this upon all of you, if you don't feel comfortable with it, but in an ideal world, I'd, I'd like to be able to tell her that conditionally, we can, you know, offer her, the, offer a position on condition that the contract is, is completed and amenable, you know, and is, and is approved. But, um, you know, I certainly understand that if you wanted to be more involved in the, in the, the process, so I'll leave it to the board.
Um, I'm, I'm, I don't see why we can't see what you come up with. And then if we have to jump in, I mean, we can, but otherwise, we can just date a quick meeting to approve the contract, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would take a few minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we could probably get it done pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
So let me try, see if I can get something together that we can even get maybe a little sooner than the twentieth, so we can, you know, just, uh, do that, okay, that's fine. At that point, I'll invite her to the meeting as well.
Okay, um, so all those in favor of the contract?
Carboni, I?
Uh, the camera, I.
Fabian, I, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I think I see Franklin, Frank there, he's got the road in front of him, right?
Yeah, he's on the road again.
He's, um, he's always on the road, the poor guy. There he is. Um, so we have a request from Frank Moniz, who is our DPW Director, um, and possible vote to appoint Michael Jones as a heavy motor equipment operator. And I know this is a position that's been vacant for a little while, Frank, correct? Oh, I think you're muted. No, I can't hear.
Yeah, Frank is muted.
It doesn't say muted, but I can't hear, um.
Franklin, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Frank? He's connecting.
Okay.
Hello, now.
Oh, yeah, there we go. So this is a position that's gone, um, vacant for a few months, right?
Yeah, all, altogether, the, this one in particular has been, yeah, quite a while, um, but it's been, we have another one vacant, and then we just recently filled the one that we had open for almost a year.
Yeah.
So.
Um, and, and again, some of the tricky things is, you know, these positions require, you know, licenses like CDLs and all that other stuff, which are, you know, not the easiest, um, thing to get or maintain, but, um, so I know it says that you're requesting a Level 2 Step 4 contingent on pre-employment screening, correct?
That's correct, yep.
All right, so, um, I will entertain a motion to hire, uh, Michael Jones to be appointed as a heavy motor equipment operator, um, at Level 2 Step 4 contingent on pre-employment screening.
So moved.
I'll second the motion with discussion, please.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
Madam, Madam Chair, this item is not on the agenda, you have to do it under new business.
It's, uh, it's actually on the posted agenda, Rich.
Yeah, it's on the posted agenda, it just wasn't on the version, you, you already provided a, an earlier version of the draft agenda of the board, was I explaining that?
Okay, yeah, but, um, this, I don't know if you can see this one, this one was the one that was posted online, and it's on here, so I'm sorry, I should've said that at the beginning, my apologies. We just figured that out earlier.
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, all right, so, all those in favor? Carboni, I?
The camera, I.
Fabian, I, and, uh, I just wanna thank Frank for, you know, some of these positions, he and Clarinda have been working really diligently with trying to get some of these positions filled, and, um, you know, I know you, it's hard to do what you guys do, being shorthanded, so I appreciate all your efforts, Frank.
Thank you, yeah, Clarinda's been instrumental in getting these guys in here, unfortunately, it's just tough to do it.
Yeah, all right, all right, thank you very much, sorry, uh, Rich and Lorraine, I, I completely forgot to, uh, mention that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, item number nine is, uh, request for a one-day special liquor license for the Lakeville Lions Fa- Fall Family Festival, which is gonna be held on September 11th, 2021, so included in the packet, we have the application. Um, also, we have their certificate of insurance for the vendor, who will be serving beer and wine, showing their liquor liability insurance, so I will entertain a motion to approve, to approve a one-day liquor license for the Lakeville Lions Fall Family Festival on September 11th, 2021. Do we have hours, do we need to?
Twelve to five.
Twelve to five, thank you.
So moved.
Seconds.
You'll have to step down and second it, I'm a Lakeville Lions member, so I don't wanna vote on it.
Okay, um, I'll step down and second the motion, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I?
Fabian, I, anyone?
The camera, abst- abstain.
Abstain, okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Now, we have, uh, that's why this is tough for me, I'm looking off the printed one from the website, and it's a little smaller for anyone who can relate. Agenda item number ten is review and vote to accept letter of resignation from Brenda Carter from the Council on Aging. Uh, I have given this some thought, regretfully, I think it's best that I withdraw as an alternate, I don't think I'll be able to deliver the support that would and should be required to the board, perhaps another time, I'll be, uh, better able to serve the town. Um, I always appreciate when people, you know, um, are very honest with us. Um, so, I will entertain a motion to accept Brenda Carter's resignation from the Council on Aging.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I?
Camera, I.
Next, we have, um, a request from South Shore Race Management to hold the Mullin Hill Run for Veterans 5K on November 6th, 2021, so there was a little bit of, uh, rush to get some of this information in last minute, but at this time, the, both of the chiefs have looked at this and have approved, um, I do believe Police Chief Matt Perkins made a recommendation on what he wants to see for details, and I do believe today, um, Chief O'Brien approved also. So I think we have everything we have, we need in here now to make a decision. Does anyone have any questions or anything? All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve, to approve a, uh, a permit, is that what this is, Tracy?
No, it's just, just an approval.
A request, so, uh, request to approve South Shore Race Management, uh, Mullin Hill Run for Veterans 5K on November 6th, 2021. And, uh, again, I don't know if it has hours, nine AM, the road race will start at nine AM. So moved. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I?
The camera, I.
Fabian, I?
Madam Chairman?
Yep.
Can we, we're on a related item, um, so I know that this is an issue that has been, um, on to the board's attention lately, um, and that is a question of uses of rights of way, and make sure that we have an approval process, as well as proper fees in place for the, for the use of those roads and so on, that wouldn't apply here as much, because it's a, uh, so, I believe it's a, um, you know, a nonprofit uh, type cause, but, but, but nevertheless, um, at the board's direction, we have been putting together that program. We have received comments, but, um, we had an interdepartmental group that met on the, on the subject, consisting of the police chief, the fire chief, uh, the DPW Director, um, Special Services Director, myself, and, um, and we, um, came, put, came up with a process, ran it by KP, came back with, uh, with edits and, and suggestions, and we'll be ready to provide something to you for rearview for September 20th meeting.
Okay, all right, yeah, no, that sounds great, thank you, appreciate the information. So, agenda item number twelve, which is our meeting dates, suggested meeting dates, so, um, I think most, most of us have something going on, so, uh, in, in the beginning of September, so um, our next scheduled meeting is September 20th. Then we run into, um, October, having Columbus Day weekend, so that's October 11th. So we're scheduled for October 12th and the 25th. Then we're gonna have the November 8th town meeting, so, um, let's talk schedule.
All right, I won't be here on the 20th
of September.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yep.
I, um, I think we oughta try to get back on some kind of two-week schedule here. Every time we do a three-weeker, you know, we wind up with a big agenda. So, I, I would like to propose that, uh, the next meeting after September 20th be October 4th. We know we now have to meet on the 25th anyways.
Yep.
Because, um, that's a given. And then the town meeting, so we could have a meeting before the town meeting on the 8th. And then we'd have another meeting on the 22nd of November. And then December's meetings would be December 6th and December 20th.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I was hoping we could get to, to a month. Um, Lorraine, do you have any?
Well, what do we know? I, I, I believe what Rich is saying, because, um, I like, you know, if we can have meetings for two hours, I think we can get a lot done. But, so, three-hour, four-hour meetings are just, they kill us, so.
Okay, so then every two weeks?
Right, so we're here on the 30th, so who's going away on the, the 13th, who's gone?
Um, Rich is gonna be away, plus I'm gonna be away.
All right, you guys are gone that week of the 13th?
September, yeah.
September, yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right.
So, I mean, right now, we kinda have no choice but to do September 20th.
No, that's fine.
That's when we said we had to approve the articles, right?
Yeah, and that's when we have to approve, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, so we need that September 20th date, but, um, if you wanna stay with, you know, every two weeks, at least for a little bit, um, let's see what we can.
It'll be October 4th and the 18th, I believe.
And so we'll get rid of the 12th, right?
Yeah, that's Columbus Day weekend anyways, right?
Then we're either gonna have to meet on the 25th, have a quick meeting to do that, because we're supposed to vote on the, um, the warrant, right?
Right, so the 4th and the 25th of October.
Um, the 4th, the 18th, well, I'm sorry, yes, I guess it's the 25th, yeah.
Right, so the 4th and the 25th.
Right.
Okay, all right, that works.
Then November 8th and November 22nd.
Yeah, November.
We'll get rid of the 15th, okay.
Town meeting, November 22nd.
So you're gonna have before your town, so you're gonna have before the town meeting on the 8th?
We can, if there's nothing pressing, we can wait, but, you know, if there's something we need to do, we can do.
Okay. I just didn't know if it would be more productive to, well, maybe the 15th and the 29th, or something like that.
So we're doing the 4th of October and the 25th, correct?
Yep.
And then the 8th is town meeting, right? And then we said November 22nd, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you wanna go to there, or do you wanna just go through the end of the year again?
End of the year is good.
And I was proposing December 6th and December 20th.
It works for me.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
On the December 20th, um, just to keep in mind, we may need to have a quick meeting for any late licensing submittals.
Yeah, I know the last couple of years, we've gone like the last Monday of the month, just to, for, for that, so.
Right.
Um.
Well, we don't renew the license unless they get the license in. Simple as that, you know?
Um, I, I mean.
Well, in advance, and there's no reason for them not to get them back.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I certainly don't have major Christmas plans that I, I don't cook, I don't shop anymore, so I can do the 20th, but I don't know about everybody else.
I'm fine with the 6th and the 20th.
That's fine.
20th is fine for me.
So I just realized something about the 4th, this isn't determinative to all of you, just so you know, on the 4th, I'll be at ICMA, the ICMA Annual Conference. Um, so, um, Christina can attend in my place, that's fine, but I just want you guys to know.
Okay.
Okay, that's October 4th, right?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Just realized it, sorry.
Yep. All right, so we have October 4th and 25th, November 8th is fall town meeting, or town meeting, special town meeting, November 22nd Board of Selectmen, and then December 6th, December 20th, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
November 8th, what time will the Board of Selectmen meeting be? And is it gonna be a remote meeting, or an in-person meeting?
Well, I'm thinking we'll be at town meeting, um, so it'll be in person? If we need it, I mean, if we don't need it, then we don't need it.
So what time?
Um, we could do six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Yeah, cuz town meeting is at seven, right?
I think that depends on the agenda, Tracy.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll do our best to keep that one as light as we can.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, this isn't like a voted, set-in-stone thing, like town meeting has to be, so.
Okay.
All right, moving along, everyone good with that? Okay, um, number thirteen, under new business, so number thirteen is new business, um, but I just, you know, wanted to, um, instead of making this an agenda item, I know last year, um, the board made up of Selectmen, the camera, Selectmen Day, and Selectmen, Fabian, myself. Um, we had discussed the possibility of increasing some of the animal shelter bordering, boarding fees. So, I don't know if we want to do that this year, but now would be the time to decide before we start sending out the renewals. Um, I would like to see us increase the fee, but I don't know if anyone else is interested in doing that, or if anyone else has any comment, either way.
And the reason we would be increasing the fees for?
Uh, well, I just think that, um, everything's getting more expensive, including food, I know, um, the Animal Control Officer, Dave Freitz, if it wasn't for him hustling to get donations for food for the actual animal shelter, would be actually paying for more food. Um, I just think that Dave does an exceptional job, um, stretching a dollar over there, and I'm afraid, you know, if he decides to retire, I don't know um, if we'll be able to continue to receive all the donations and everything that, that he gets, so I don't wanna set ourselves up for the, I, I do know we collect a lot of, um, donations, which is what he pays for, um, surrenders through, but again, I think people like to donate because I think people like to donate because they know he does really good things with that money. So if for summary, and Dave hasn't indicated in any way, shape, or form, but. I'd like us to be able to get a little bit more money from the area towns that we board for. In case we have to pay for all the food and everything, in case we don't get donations anymore.
How long is the, the boarding rate been at fifteen dollars?
Chair.
Yep.
Um, the boarding fee originally was ten dollars a day when we started accepting, um, animals from other towns. So it has been raised once. Um, I would have to say we've been boarding animals there, I would say for at least eight to ten years. So it's only been increased once during that period.
Okay, and FY twenty, do we know what, how much we collected in fees for boarding?
I don't know for FY twenty, just FY twenty one, um, but it probably was around the same, perhaps a little more. As we've gone on with our boarding programs, the area towns have done very well. Not having as many stray animals coming into the shelter as they used to. So that has, you know, improved over the years. Most of these fees are for surrendered dogs that are coming in.
You can certainly find that out.
Okay.
Well, yeah. Um, that's, that's kind of why I did this under new business, because if I'm the only one interested, then, you know, it doesn't make sense. To make it an agenda item, but if everybody, you know, else wants to have a full-blown discussion, then, you know, I would ask. Ari and Tracy and Dave to get us, you know, all kinds of information, including how much money they take in in donations, the amount of animals.
And we'll do a benchmark analysis and we'll, um, give some history on revenue as well, if you're interested in having an item.
Right, yeah.
And then we can put it on the next agenda. I mean, I won't be here, but, um, I mean, I, I would support the increase. But I just wanted to make sure that we had the answers.
Yep, um, so I know two years ago, we tried to increase. I think the fees for. Uh, the leash law fees or the fines there, but the state also regulates. How much, it's, I, I think you can't be any more expensive than the state, so there's all different kinds of fees here, so. You know, and that was my thing, my thing was if someone else is interested, then we can look at it. But if I'm the only one, then I figured no sense making it an agenda item.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Um, I think we ought to take it a little further. And you got ten communities here, and these ten communities, and some of them are pretty big. Um, they don't have their own animal shelter. Right?
Yep.
So we're paying all the costs, you know, for, to operating the animal shelter, and we're taking in sixty-eight hundred dollars, you know, from these towns. I think there ought to be a minimum charge, you know, to these towns, uh, for a fee. Um, cuz they're saving tons of money by coming to our animal shelter, cuz they don't have to have their own. We got our own building, heat, electricity, you know, all that stuff, you know, associated with, and the cost of maintaining the building. So I think we need to think about that, too.
Okay.
I can make a suggestion.
Yep.
Um, what we can do, just to the benchmark analysis and looking at pastors' revenue, uh, that benchmark analysis would be, what, what do the others charge as well? The ones that have shelters, um, is, um, get into, um, a, a look at some of the other animal shelters. That perhaps we don't necessarily, the towns that have shelters that we don't necessarily board from. Find out what type of minimum charges they're charging, um, so we can do a true benchmark analysis of what the, of what the, the, the cost charge for shelter is. Shelter time, that way you'll have some, you know, you'll have, you'll have the data in front of you.
Okay. Um, all right, so we will go ahead and get this on a future agenda. Tracy, I'll work with you and Ari on timing of when we send out. Um, the renewals, and then we'll get a whole bunch of information so that we can take a look at this. All right, um. Does anyone, I have one more thing for new business. Does anyone else have anything for new business?
I have one thing.
Yep.
Um, so just, uh, I alluded to this earlier. Um, we have some credible candidates, on paper anyway, for the H R Director. We're gonna, we'd like to proceed with the, um, interview, like, with the interview process. Um, if the board's amenable, I just, I take same approach we've taken with these other senior positions, which is to create an interdepartmental panel. Um, I haven't, uh, I, I haven't asked the individuals yet, but it would consist of department heads from a number of departments, as well as Clarine as well, because of her insight. Um, and, uh, and run through the process of interviews, these candidates, they come back to you with recommendations. Um, if you're comfortable with that, we'll proceed with that process.
I'm good.
Bye.
Yep, I'm good with that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so, Lorraine, my new business has to do with one of your recent requests. I'm just curious, um, what, if anything, has prompted the staffing report requests? I'm just kind of. Is it just for? Your own information or?
Yeah, I wanted to get acclimated to what we had for staffing levels. Past, past year, current year, um, I wasn't part of the budget process. Um, I will be part of the budget process going forward, so I wanna have a very good understanding, um, with regards to staffing levels. I started with the fire department as we, it was like every other meeting, we were appointing somebody new, or somebody was shifting. Um, from, you know, a call fighter to a permanent, so it was a little all over the place. And I didn't want the police chief or the highway department to feel that they were being left out, um, in any way. So, um, I, those are our biggest departments, other than the school, obviously.
Yep.
And I wanted to have a really good understanding where we stood. Um, with staffing and where our staffing needs are today, with the projections that they'll be providing us during the budget cycle.
Okay.
So, and I, and I have to compliment each of the department heads so far that. You know, the reports that have come out have been wonderful, very easy to understand. Um, I know where we are and kind of where we're, where we've been.
Okay.
So I have an idea of where we may be going, so.
Okay, I just, yeah, I just didn't know if anything else might have prompted, you know, um, whatever. I was just kind of curious. I know that those reports sometimes are done easier, like you said, during the budget season, when the information is sitting in front of the department heads. But that's why I was just kind of curious, that's all. Um, does anyone else have anything for new business?
Um, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Just so you know, um, so I was working on the budget this past year with Todd. Um, there is backup documentation of all the staffing levels that are in the budget, along with their, um. Their wages and their salary, so if Lorraine wants additional information, she could just get it from Todd, cuz those are available, so we don't have to do special reports.
Okay, um, I, you know, I didn't think that these were like, you know, reports that were gonna take hours and hours. But I, you know, I figured they were brief enough. Um, you know, but as selectmen, we're entitled to, you know, all kinds of information if we ask for it. But, you know, if one of us has a request that could be lengthy, then, you know, maybe we could bring it. To a meeting and discuss it or whatever, but like I said, these weren't, you know. Basically, like what Rich said, it's there, you know, right from the, you know, the budget stuff. Um, but I just was curious if there was anything else that you were looking for, or wanted to see, or recommendation you wanted to make, or.
Well, if I did, I'd bring it to the board.
Okay. All right, um, anything else under new business? All right, old business. Anyone for old business?
Um, Madam Chair, unless I'm mistaken, that we were supposed to meet with the Open Space Committee tonight? The last meeting.
Were we?
As a follow-up, remember they. We're gonna meet, you know, uh, and we were supposed to meet with them to talk about the updates. And, um, they were gonna look at the, uh, plan and discuss it among themselves, and then they were gonna get back to us, so we could meet. And discuss some of the issues that, you know, as the board has, as the town ministering has. Um, I thought we decided we were gonna do that, unless I missed it.
Okay, um, maybe I missed it, Rich. I'll look at my paperwork, but we can, I can go back and check it out.
So my, my understanding of the direction was that, um, I was directed to reach out to Serp Ed, which I did. Um, and begin a conversation, which we're going to, they're taking a while to get back to me. Um, between Serp Ed and, um, Adam Young, and regarding the scope of what they're looking for, for the update to the open space plan. So we could get a sense of what kind of hours would actually be required. Um, one thing that's become clear to me already, even though I haven't had the meeting yet, but just some conversations I've had with Bill Napolitano and, um. Having a moment, Executive Director of Serp Ed, um.
Jeff Walker.
Jeff Walker, geez, sorry. And Jeff Walker is that, um, this, you know, it's, what they're looking for is well beyond twenty hours of work. And, um, there, yeah, so there, there, there really needs to be a much clearer discussion regarding the scope and scale, what they're looking at. My, my intention had been to come back to the board once I had an actual, you know, reasonable scope to look at, to show, to show to you all, instead of just sort of discussing this hypothetically.
That's fine.
Okay.
I am on it.
Okay. Um, all right, anything else, old business?
The Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Yeah.
The last time we met with them, they were going back and have discussion among themselves, and I thought we were supposed to meet with them again.
I don't even know if they met. I haven't talked to Rodney.
Uh, the MPIC met about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, I, I'm on the committee now. And, um, we went through the, um, crosswalk and, you know, the little changing of assignments and, and rework things. They were digest, last meeting, they agreed to digest it, um, they hadn't, they hadn't decided upon anything yet, so I don't think they felt ready to come back to the board. Um, their next meeting is on September fifteenth, I believe. Um, and I would imagine coming out of that, they'll be ready to talk to the board.
So maybe they can join us on the twentieth.
Perhaps, yeah.
Lorraine may wanna be here, so.
Okay.
Push it back, yeah.
All right.
Yep, okay. Anything else?
Yes, the, uh, the Long Pond issues and association, the problems with the, uh, Long Pond. I, um, I saw an email, which I know, I think everybody was copied off, if I'm not mistaken. That, um, you know. This, this information, it just isn't right.
And so, I think. Yeah, can I, can I just stop you for one second, Rich? So, a court, that email, the one that I forwarded? Is that the one? So that references a meeting that took place August twenty fifth, but near as I can tell. None of us were invited, so none of us were there. Um. Just wanted to let you know, so I'm not sure who was involved, maybe you know, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't.
I have no idea.
Yeah, so I've put a few phone calls out there to try to see. Um, it wasn't the, through the APC, the Assawamset Pond Complex, it wasn't through that. So, um, you know, that was like a long narration from, uh, James Sarsa. So I don't know what happened at that meeting. I didn't even know that meeting was taking place.
Okay, well, I, I just think that, you know. Let's get all the information out and get the facts out as to what needs to be done. I mean, they've talked about everything from, you know, um, uh, the money that was, that was provided by the state for the D E P. You know, we got the, I got the, I, I, I factually got the information on the boat ramp, um, you know, who's responsible for what. Um, all these things need to be cleared out, because there's just so much. Um, misinformation that's being put out there, and, you know, if you read that, you know, some of it says, oh, well, we're gonna make the. Members of the Board of Selectmen from Lakeville and Free Town beyond this quote-unquote, whatever it is, we don't know anything about that.
Right.
So I think we need to clear up some of those issues, so I would say, once again, so Lorraine can be here. That we may do it on October fourth or, or whatever, even later if we have to, but, um.
I mean, again, I.
Get the, the right information, that everybody's on the same page, cuz you've attended meetings, I mean, I attended one meeting at your place, you asked me to. And, um, it was just all over the place, so.
Right. And I do know that, you know, some of the, um, I think the Senator, Senator Rodrick has recommended, they, you know, try to go through. The APC, other people have recommended, they try to work with Serp Ed. I mean, you know, I, the pond folks themselves, I think some are trying to do one thing, others are trying to do something else. So, um, you know, I'm not really sure, you know, what we, uh, what we, I would have liked to have been at, to that meeting. But, um.
You were very sick.
Yeah, well, not that one, the one last week, I was very sick at that one, but the one last week. Um, so I'm trying to, you know, I've put out a few phone calls to see if I can figure out, you know, what's going on through there. Um, the APC has a lot of work on its hands, just with, you know, Assawamset and the river. And, you know, I'm sure, you know, we're all willing to help here, but you're right, it's like, you know, we don't really know too much. The four of us right here, so. Um, you know.
Well, we need to start somewhere.
Yeah.
It is a problem, it's not going away, um.
It's a big problem.
Yeah.
Yep.
Huge problem. And the, and the email that we saw, that we saw, you know, uh, Senator Rodrick was proposing, you know, fifty thousand dollar earmark in the budget. That's a drop in the bucket.
Right.
Right.
I seem even close to even address the issue.
Right, and I, but again, maybe that the conversation needs to happen with the Senator. Um, I mean, Ari, maybe you could reach out to the Senator just to, um, follow up to see, um, you know, what he has, maybe he comes back to see us. Um.
Right, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in the same boat as you all, by the way, and the first I heard about this meeting was, you know, was this email. So I, I had no idea about it as well, so I'll be happy to reach out to them.
Okay, and then, um, I really think that we really should be putting something in place. I, I know the APC has been really busy, like you said, Leah, with Assawamset and the river. But there has to be some kind of a, a vehicle in which funding comes through, um, it can't just give it to, you know, anybody. So if it, if it comes through and it goes through the, you know, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen, that's one thing. But the committee of the APC is already together, they've worked well together, Serp Ed's already involved, all the other entities, uh, are involved. Um, the sister communities are involved, I mean, it would be, you know, a good vehicle to kind of. You know, once they finish what they're doing, we can shift gears at the same time to do what we have to do for Long Pond.
Right.
I know it's not a dead issue, I know we're still pursuing it, it's just figuring out how to make all those pieces come together.
Right, and, you know, I think, um, I think they're having on September fifth, they're having their poker run. I'm not sure exactly what that, what that entails, but as a fundraiser, I guess, so. Um, you know.
It's a fishing thing.
Yeah, I think it's a fishing thing, but, you know, I mean, we, right, you know, we've been talking to the Senator and to, you know, Representative Oral. About getting a boat wash station from two, three years ago, so, you know, there does need to be some sort of. And then, uh, from what I understand. And then, uh, from what I understand, the meeting that took place last week, and again, you know, this is just from what I, you know, heard from a few people. They want, that so many folks from the pond wanted to attend, and it was like a Zoom format. So I don't even think everyone was able to attend that wanted to, so, I, I mean, you know, the good news is, a lot of people wanna do something, so we need to find the right, the right way. You know, to get, to get everyone on board to do something, so, um. We'll keep working on that, but to my fellow board members and to the town administrator. You hear anything, let me know, cuz obviously I didn't hear anything on this meeting last week either, so, and I promise to do the same.
Okay. All right, Madam Chair, I just have one more thing on Old Business, please.
Yep.
Um, Ari, I'd like to try to get an update on where we are with, uh, getting those, those monies for the design services for the, uh, Brit, the Bridge Street, Main Street Traffic Light.
I had a meeting last week with, um, Mast dot, uh, and, uh, they, um. Um, made, the, the, the recommendation to us is that we submit it as a TIP project. Um, which we, uh, which we did, um, at least to start the process, um, that there, there will be match involved and so on. Um, there's question of, um, the, the bond money itself, which has not been released, and that's really up to the administration. Um, I would say that Senator Roderick's office has been trying to be helpful in terms of facilitating, but there's only so much they can do. Um, Mast dot doesn't view this as a top priority project, that's pretty clear. Um, so, um, you know, TIP projects, promo TIP projects, that's a long road, and, um, that could, uh, that, that could take some time, so we're. Um, what we're hoping to do is get the project moving, so at least, um, we, we get, um, the, the, uh, it's selected so we can go, move, go with design. Um, and then perhaps we give money release for design, um, but design itself will cost a lot of money in its own right. Um, and, you know, there's always a possibility, as well as talking to, um, associated development interests as well, um, regarding, um, their, their willingness to, to, to contribute, but, uh, yeah, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that until we had a number, so we're, we're moving forward on that, on that front as well, so. As of last week, we had submitted the project into the system for, for, uh, for TIP projects, so I could, so the, the, some asks I could evaluate it and move forward, I'm willing to hear back from them.
Um, I'll make a comment on that, please. Um, actually, um. Franklin Highway Director and myself met with, uh, Mast DOT and Serp Ed over a year ago.
Yeah.
And the project was two and a half million dollars.
Yeah.
And they said they weren't gonna put it on the TIP project, that the town of Lakeville would have to pay a hundred percent of that cost. And that's when the two and a half million dollars was put in the, uh, the bond bill, you know, to fund this project. So I'm against going with TIP, because, uh, we'll be long gone before that gets on the TIP program, there's so many, there's so many projects. And if DOT doesn't think it's a, a priority project, it'll be five, six, seven years if we're lucky.
Well, in, in that sense, then, it really is up to the administration to release the, um, to, to release the, the money for the, the bond funds. So, yes, so, um, Mast, again, Mast's suggestion was submit the project, and then, and then go to the administration, and, um, Senator Roderick's office told us to facilitate that.
Submit the what now?
Submit the, submit the TIP project, get in the system, and then go, and then go to the administration to release the funds.
And where are the funds gonna go?
Well, they're, they're in the bond bill.
Right, but are they gonna come to the town, or who's gonna manage that project?
The, that, that has not, that's not clear at this point. It could be, it could be Mast dot, or it could be the town, I, I absolutely would prefer it be Mast dot, but I don't know if Mast dot would, I don't know, does it in the cards or not?
Well, it's a shame, you know, that, uh, it's already got preliminary design, all the studies have been done, you know, on this intersection. Um, and. Mast DOT and Serp Ed wanted us to go ahead with the project, but of course, they wanted the town to fund a hundred percent of that project. Which we said.
Didn't do.
No. And this, and the other thing is that their estimate of two and a half million dollars to put a traffic light in, it's ridiculous, so.
Yeah.
Um. Anyways, so I think we gotta, um, work on that a little more, um.
I'm shocked by that as well, I mean, I'm, I'm, we're trying, Rich, I just don't, you know, getting the state bureaucracy to open up on this thing is, is proving to be a challenge.
Well, keep doing what you're doing, Ari, and once we, um, you know, we can get the money released, we can, you know, work with Senator Roderick and, um, Rep Oral. To see what they can do to move it through.
Thank you.
Hey, anything else, Rich?
That's it.
Okay. Any other business that can properly come before the board? All right, if that's it, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Say again.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Carbone, aye?
La Camera, aye.
Fabian, aye. Thank you, everyone, thanks, Tracy.